The Cohasset School Committee meeting of Wednesday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, we are conducting this meeting following Governor Baker's declaration of a state of emergency in the Commonwealth arising from COVID- nineteen pandemic. We are meeting virtually utilizing the Zoom technology. Can I have a roll call, please?
President Craig McLuhan.
President Ashley Clary.
President Ellen Marr. Jen?
I bet you they're muted and they don't know.
I don't see Jen. There she is.
President Paul Kearney.
Jen?
Jen's not muted. She might be just struggling with some technical issues there.
Okay, all right, well, we have a quorum. So this meeting, we're recording it on Zoom and it's also being streamed live on one four three TV. So we have our call to order, so Superintendent Sullivan, please proceed.
Yes, thank you very much. So we're getting a little better at the Zoom. Certainly, and from a school point of view, we're we're well well in practice here. I do have our three student representatives that are joining us again today as they did last time. And we had a wonderful meeting with most of the superintendent, school committee, student advisory committee yesterday. And we had some really good discussions and we're going to share some of that. So what I'm gonna, what we decided to do in terms of updates is that each of our representatives, so we have Caroline, Madeline, and Margaret, are going to give a little bit of a day in the life and we'll take turns on turns with each of them telling us about what their lives have been like as we've progressed into the next phase of remote learning and then just in general, as we've gone deeper into this school cancellation period. Then we're going to have Caroline give a summary of our meeting yesterday and what we talked about and some of the points we covered. Margaret will then give an update on her work with Safe Harbors. She's been doing great work all year. And some of the issues that they're handling and working through. And then Madeline, of course, is one of our amazing seniors, as is Margaret on this team. And Madeline will tell a little bit about the seniors and what she's going through from the perspective of a senior and kind of looking forward to some uncertainty, but knowing that we're certainly going to rally around them and and celebrate with them when we can. So we'll go with that if that's okay. We'll start with, I guess Caroline will do the day in the life of all three. Caroline, I think you have to unmute.
Happened last time, too. So I've my day in the life is kind of been the same, I'd say, over what has been now like a month. I it's interesting because I my sleep schedule is very different from a lot of teenage like teenager's sleep schedule. I've seen definitely various, like some of my friends are very like morning people and they're up and it's like seven thirty and they're ready to start the day. Others kind of sleep in till like maybe ten thirty, eleven. But anyway, so I just think and like up late, which is kind of interesting in that has kind of affected some of the school, I'd say, because I know there's been like funny texts when you like sleep through Zoom and you don't mean to. But I think this week has been way better at everyone's like back in the remote learning routine has been more on top of it. And anyway, so I definitely have been like kind of doing home projects throughout the day. Definitely doing like fun artsy things that I can come up with. Like we actually, we bought a treadmill, so I've been exercising and running on that because the weather, I know, has been kind of unfortunate. And they had like the power struggles with all the storm. But hopefully in the next coming weeks, if it's nice out, I've definitely been getting out, getting outside. For school, I'd say I definitely use my computer. I'm doing scrolling through Google Classroom and teachers have been really great, like updating, even if it's not their day, they've been updating daily, just like checking in and seeing if anyone has any questions. So that's very helpful. And I'd say for school, I probably have more work for my AP classes. But it's all pretty manageable, sticking until like the two hours a day, I'd say. I'm the one that I've say that I've been doing a class per day, whether I know people have been kind of like taking chunks and working through, like doing all five subjects one day, like little bits one day at a time. And I know for me, I've been doing like Monday strictly math, Tuesday, and I can seemingly getting it all done. So I think that's worked out. I've liked having some structure and things to do. I've also participated, Ms. Riordan has been doing an SAT class, which has been really helpful and I've been that's happened, it's on Thursday, so I've done that twice. And been looking forward to that. I'd say just I check in with my family and other friends. I know we have a little drive by of one of my friends, it's her eighteenth birthday tomorrow. So we're all gonna drive by and just like give her a nice wave because we're all happy, couldn't be there to celebrate. So I'm looking forward to that, just like trying to find like little things to put a smile on my face or other people's faces. I've also for NHS, we've been doing people have been sending messages to the senior citizens at Sunrise, which I participated in. And that's been really cool how you would kind of just create, you can send a video, pictures, people like my friends have been dancing and stuff and sending through that's through NHS and Mrs. Norton to help continue our service hours, but also to help lighten the sunrise because like they aren't allowed to have visitors. So that's been really nice. Think there's some other things that I'll get into when I talk about our meeting. But for me, I it's been interesting to hear other people's days in life. And I'm I'm looking forward to more of the next weeks as we get more into the remote learning.
Thank you, Caroline. That's great. Margaret?
So for my day in the life, the way I prepared for this, it's a little bit shorter than Caroline's. But I I figured it would probably be helpful for some parents out there to know what my workload is looking like these days. So Caroline mentioned that there's some different strategies people have been utilizing to manage the work that they're receiving. So, you know, I started last week maybe doing a class a day. But I noticed for my AP classes, there was just too much work to to sit down and do all of that work at once. So what I did yesterday for homework was I wrote a forty-five minute essay to prepare for the AP Lit exam. I read a few chapters of Wide Sargasso Sea. I recorded myself playing guitar for my band class and I answered some comprehension questions that went along with a video I had to watch for my Holocaust and Human Behavior class. So that's sort of an idea of what my workload has looked like. Yeah, I just thought maybe that would be helpful for people to hear.
It is. Thanks, thank you. Madeline?
So I've had a pretty similar workload to Margaret. So I wanted to more touch on what remote learning has done as far as structure. So I've definitely seen more of a structure in my life since having remote learning. I've structured my life around my Zoom classes and then how I'm going to do homework. And it's been really helpful, I think, for a lot of people from the feedback I've heard that having, it's not crazy, like we talked about this in the meeting and Caroline will get into it, that it's not crazy, seven thirty to two PM every single day Zoom classes. It's given people time to have the learning, continue the learning, but also be there for their family if they need to. And I know for me, it has given me a lot more opportunities to read for pleasure and also to do new things that I haven't done before. Like my mom and I are learning sign language together right now, which is something we've talked about for years and now we can finally do it together. And so I think that this has given kids and I'm sure adults a lot of opportunities to work around that. And I think it's been really beneficial.
Great, thank you all. That's a great update. You can see the routines being established with all of them, which we knew would happen and it's happening with staff as well. You know, it's it's a new world out there, but thank you for all three of you for being so positive with that. Caroline, maybe you could talk a little bit about our meeting. We thought the meeting was really productive.
Yeah, so like this is a little more organized, what I'm going to say, but we met yesterday for, there's eight of us composed, I'm like, as you know, of seniors, I'm the junior, two sophomores, a freshman and eighth grader Charlie joined us. And it was like really nice to hear from like all sorts of grade levels and really help kind of like indulge even my perspective because I only know like from what I'm doing, but I heard a lot from like the sophomores and freshmen and how they're because I'm as a junior, we kind of discovered talking like I'm more my anxieties and stresses more about like college and SAT and the second semester of like my junior grades and how the outcome of like whatever decision is made about grading, how that's going to affect a lot of the juniors. We we talked for a little over an hour and it was like, it was funny because we kind of had to stop the conversations. We all could have probably kept going for like three hours because we all had so much to say. I think what I thought was most interesting, I'd like to share is how so Charlie, the eighth grader, and Ms. Collins were having an interesting conversation about like what Zoom is like for kids in the middle school and how sometimes like you can see there's they're insecure about maybe showing their face on the Zoom and they like to be muted and have the screen off. And that's something I didn't really hear before because I know, I think in high school, most if your screen's off, like no one really thinks too much about it. So I'd be interesting to see like going forward and how if like maybe eighth graders, if they're uncomfortable, if being like not on camera, not showing your face is still acceptable, just because they may be like insecure about kids on their phones or taking pictures and stuff. So I think that was something to consider that was talked about. I know Ms. Collins had a lot of ideas on that. I think as Zoom, what we've been, what we talked about a lot is kids are really liking having like daily check ins with their teachers. And different from a lesson that your teacher instructs like on a whiteboard, that's not really, and you have to just like sit there and listen to. I think just checking in and explaining the Google Classroom assignments like in words and having kids ask questions on the spot during that, like, I don't know, fifteen to twenty minute Zoom has been really helpful. I just think going forward, it would be if these were becoming more regular structure, that it would happen on the day of the high school class you have, like Monday period one, Tuesday period two. Because I know I had two conflicting Zooms and it was kind of like, oh, which one do I go? And they happened at the same time and it was just like a coincidence. And the teachers, like after they were told, they're like, I'm so sorry, like you won't make, we'll make sure that won't happen again. So I think that's been going well, just like the daily check ins and the teachers even have been asking about our lives. And we've been able to share with them and kind of help them understand more of what like the high school are experiencing. And I know, like obviously Zoom has been such a helpful tool. And I look, I think we all look forward to using that down the road. And I just wanted to also update how like for athletics, like I know for the girls across, Coach Chloe Riordan has been doing Zoom like workouts with their team and they've been, if you saw that on Twitter, it's been really fun for like you'd like see your teammates and doing workouts led by the coach, which has been fun. And I know Maddie will get into a more talk about the seniors and how that's affecting them. So I'll pass it on to her or Margaret, whoever going next.
Okay, we'll have Margaret go next because that was good summary of a long meeting. We had a lot in there. Thank you. Margaret, pick up about Safe Harbors.
Okay, yeah. So Safe Harbor has been keeping up with our youth meetings. We've been doing those on Zoom on Tuesday nights. So currently, we're working on presentations for the Reservoir Cleanup Project, which is a bigger townwide project. But we're focusing on some of the substance use litter that is around the reservoir. So our high schoolers are focusing mostly on presentations for that. And then the middle schoolers have been working on PSAs to distribute resources to help teens quit tobacco use. And that's in response to the flavor ban, which will be going into place in June. Because we do wonder if maybe more teens will resort to smoking cigarettes and transitioning from vapes. We want to make sure those resources are available for students throughout our town before that happens. And one thing that I, the reason I'm taking I'm speaking on this specifically is because there's a big topic that I want to cover briefly that I want to make sure that parents in the town are aware of. And this is the nutmeg challenge. So this may be familiar to some of you as the term that comes up every couple of years. But some essentially, if a person consumes a certain amount of nutmeg, they may experience some hallucinogenic effects. These effects can last from six to thirty hours and may be accompanied by heart palpitations and physical side effects that have been described to feel like a severe case of the flu. So our program director, Nicole Bala, she explained that this was a trend when she was in high school and that she witnessed peers being sent to the hospital because of ingesting too much. And this is noted when you look it up online that some people have to go to the hospital as a result of the effects that they experienced because of this. Obviously, this is not forever is one to be in a hospital or to compromise your health in any way. I first noticed this on a popular social media platform called TikTok. And while I have not personally heard that this is occurring in our town, it's safe to say that a combination of boredom and increased exposure to this trend on social media, that it's highly probable that this will be something that will begin to take place in Cohasset. Other at-home DIY drugs have also gained some popularity online recently, such as inhalants from compressed air or whipped cream and sage, which contains a chemical that can be poisonous if consumed in large amounts. So if you're viewing from home and would like more information about these trends or advice related to preventing misuse of these household items, you can subscribe to the Safe Harbor newsletter and this Friday we'll be coming out with a resource packet for parents regarding how to handle a dialogue with your teen about substances that may just be common household items but could be abused and how to monitor those substances in your own home.
That's great. Thank you, Margaret. You have very important updates to be listened to for sure. And I know there'll be, you know, we'll be putting out information as Safe Harbor gives it to us from a school perspective. And the partnership is really strong and thank you for your leadership in that. So Madeline, I know you get to talk a little bit about seniors and what what you're going through. Not that you need to carry the weight of all the seniors, but you can certainly speak from your perspective. So thank you.
So forgive me, I might look at my phone a little. I wrote some notes down. So speaking on behalf of the seniors, I wanted to get as many people as I could to be involved in what I want to say. So I put out on social media through our class Instagram, basically saying, if you have any concerns, any questions about anything that's happening with the end of the year, prom, graduation, anything like that, just let me know. So I have a few notes and I just want to get into that feedback. So everyone's obviously very upset about prom and graduation, understandably so, and they understand why it has been canceled. So the consensus seems to be, however, that the senior class would rather have a late prom and a late graduation, if that's possible, compared to a virtual one. I think everyone really just wants like the closure and being able to see everyone one last time. And so people reached out to me and had a few ideas as to how this might work. So some people wanted like maybe a senior sleepover or a walk through of the school so that we could just be with our class again and see all our teachers one last time. That's probably like, everyone just wants to be able to see everyone in person. And I don't know if that could happen anytime soon, but a lot of people are saying maybe late summer, if depending on how things go and how things progress. Or then one of the ideas that was pitched was like a mini senior weekend that would include like a class night and senior shirt barbecue with the teachers on like a Thursday and then like a prom on a Friday and then maybe even an outdoor prom if that is our only option, like food trucks or something. So it's a little more similar to what has happened in the past. And then like a graduation on Sunday. And if it's not possible to do it at the music circus, then we could do it at like the Common or on the turf, somewhere that's outside that might be more of a viable option. So basically, the senior class wants closure and if we can't go back to school in May, that we could probably and hopefully celebrate during the summer. And then people also had a few concerns and questions about remote learning. The first being that will seniors get out the same time they're supposed to. So I think that was May twenty-seventh with the virtual learning, if we don't go back to school. And also how graduation requirements are going to be handled. If right now it doesn't, we're still in quarter, we're in like a COVID quarter. And so how different requirements will be met because some people have like a gym or health the last quarter that they need for graduation. But so far, everyone's being positive and hoping that we all be together as a class one more time.
That's great. Really good updates and it's, I'm so impressed that you got you got advice from your classmates. So you had more of a collective voice. I love you to share that. I'll share it with Principal Scott as well, so he can hear that. I know that when he sent the message about the social music circus and the prom, his biggest sort of idea was just to make sure that people knew that right now it wasn't going to be held in those facilities because they were following their rules regarding regulations. And both facilities did it with a lot of sensitivity to the fact that, you know, they'd love for the prom and graduation to be there. But they're following the safety guidelines for their facility. We absolutely want to celebrate everything the seniors have done. I've said this a few times, I'll say it again, what an amazing class you are. I'm impressed that I've been with you since the beginning of the year. And you deserve it so much. So I know that I speak for Principal Scott and his team when I say that they're they're going to plan something if they can. They're going to follow, obviously, the safety guidelines. And you, we know from just these meetings that although it's nice, a virtual graduation is not going to be the same as something we can do in person. So we're we're shooting for that for sure. So know that we are absolutely with you. No one wants to cancel anything, nor have we canceled anything. We just wanted to let you know that as planned, those events can't go on in the timeframe and in the in the facilities that they were, there was meant to be, and that's too bad. The other thing is about seniors and their last day. I'll check with Principal Scott and we'll discuss that, but my thought, my feeling is that it is going to be May twenty-seventh because we are, we are moving the the year in a in a natural way through what would be our last day, June eighteenth. You know, if we if we had been able to work, that would have been our last day if we were here, too. So my feeling is that's the case, but I'll double check with that and work with Principal Scott. And then the the third thing was about graduation requirements and how grades are going to factor into that. We're working on that, but we're we're waiting a little more guidance from the commissioner regarding that. I'll talk about that a little later. There's been no determination yet on whether we're coming back on the fourth or not. There's been more talk to make sure we prepare in the event that we do. And because of that, we are, you know, looking at grading and looking at what that might be. It's really important, and I mentioned this in the meeting, that we're going with the same philosophy that we want to help students. We know that students are going through a lot. We know the families are going through a lot. And our approach to remote learning has reflected that. And I know from knowing Principal Scott that all of and his team, that all of their actions about grading and how it factors into GPA and graduation requirements will all reflect that same feeling, that this is a health crisis, that we're trying to help kids. But we want to make sure that we're appropriate with the, you know, with the credit we give and the way we apply it. So we're right on that. And I think it's safe to say that everyone in the community should should know that we're going to be communicating that in short order. We're just really still working on it because we're waiting for a little more advice on what the the term is going to be in terms of the cancellation. Because obviously, two weeks was different than four weeks, which is certainly different than a couple of months in terms of how this all equates to graduation. But keep your chin up, Madeline, Margaret, Caroline, too, you're a junior, so you got you got another year coming back. Keep your chin up and know that you have a lot of people that are right with you and feeling the same way. And I know that's the entire school community. So thank you for that. Any questions for these amazing representatives from the committee? Caroline, you didn't mention that you got to meet my dog Roland, right? I was just kidding, I have a new bulldog and I was able to show it. I thought that would be the highlight. So yeah, any questions for Caroline, Margaret, or Madeline?
I'd just like to thank, thank you guys for your insight. I loved how this was structured, a day in the life. I think all of our lives have changed, our routines have changed, our comings and goings have changed. I feel a little blessed. I get to get up and go out to work every day and actually drive on the highway, which I used to detest. But now it's kind of a luxury. It's kind of, I feel it's a privilege. Margaret, I thought it was interesting, the nutmeg challenge. I'm going to date myself. This was something that came up when I was in junior high school, at Cohasset Junior High School. So like a lot of fashion trends, these kinds of trends come around a lot, too, from generation to generation. Madeline, about the, you know, your senior events, it's, it weighs heavy on all of us. And we know, having gone through it or having, I've had my children go through it. I know Margaret's mom had a, Margaret's sister has graduated. How important these are. So we will do whatever we can do to support Principal Scott and Superintendent Sullivan in having something, some kind of celebration for all, for all of the seniors. I concur with Dr. Sullivan. I think it's a terrific class of kids. And how you've come through this really is a testament to resiliency and a good lesson for everybody. So please know that we will, we will do whatever we can do to support those efforts for the senior class. Anyone else on the committee have any comments or questions?
I'll just go a step beyond that, Ellen, and obviously our individual authority and influence is limited. But I would like just to say to the senior class that, you know, I've been thinking of them a lot. And every kid, every kid deserves to have a high school graduation and a high school senior prom. And I will do everything I possibly can to make that happen at some point. Obviously, you have to deal with the realities of the situation. And I think everyone, everyone understands that. But at some point, and I am certain, and I don't speak for him, I have not spoken to him about this, but I'm certain, knowing Principal Scott, that he feels the same way. And I could tell in his emails, he was very disappointed for all of them. And, you know, you guys should rest assured that at least, you know, one member, and I imagine all of us on this committee feel very strongly that you guys all deserve that, you know, in-person live ceremony to congratulate you and honor the accomplishment that is a high school graduation. So I just wanted to say that because that is something that is very important to me.
Absolutely. And I agree with Craig and I agree that children deserve a graduation in 2020. So I'm in full support as well.
Yeah, you should also know that the teachers, we've been, Dark Collins and I have been in Zoom meetings now with almost every level. And to a group, they're all talking about ideas that we can creatively do to celebrate the seniors. So it's on everyone's mind. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think Jim, I want to say something. I just, there was a silence, so I jumped in.
I'm used to fighting to get I'm one of seven, so. Thank you all so much for being here. It's so reassuring to hear from students. And I'm sure there are so many people that are watching this and just love to hear your voices. So thank you. And I have to say, when I got the message from Principal Scott, I just felt so bad. And but I really see a commitment on behalf of Principal Scott and our administration to maybe think a little bit outside the box on this because we all think that this is very important. And what a testament it is to your class for you to speak to these issues. I loved the way you even Um, I, I loved the way you even organized and, um, got feedback from your classmates. So, um, thank you so much. And, and we'll just do our best.
Okay.
Um, I, I just want to say, Ellen, um, I want to thank you all also. And I, I too believe that you should have, um, a celebration that marks this significant milestone. And I'm very hopeful that you will have that. I want to thank you also, Margaret, for highlighting, um, the information from Safe Harbor. So I think that's really important right now. I think that it's a difficult time for a lot of people. And some people, you know, people deal with that differently. And so it's important for parents to continue to be aware of some of the things that are happening on social media that we might not otherwise be aware of. And so I want to really thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, um, a- anything else you'd like to ask them, Ellen?
No, I think, I think everyone, um, spoke from the heart, um, committee members included. And, um, I appreciate the girls coming to our meetings.
Super. Um, you guys did another fantastic job. Uh, thank you for everything you're doing. Hang in there and all the best to you and your families. And, uh, I'll let you sign off of the Zoom. Thank you again. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I believe next we have, Ellen, if I keep going with this.
Yes.
Our, um, athletic update. And we've, uh, invited Steve Vertandi, our athletic director, to give us an update. Um, first of all, kind of a review of our winter sports. And then some of the updates on what our coaches have been doing. And, um, you heard a little bit about, um, the lacrosse coach from Caroline, talking about some of the things that she had done and experienced with her lacrosse coach during this period. But, um, you know, the coaches are, are definitely connecting with kids. And you'll hear a little bit about that from, uh, Coach Vertandi. And I want to congratulate Athletic Director Vertandi on becoming our, our new lacrosse coach, varsity boys lacrosse coach. Um, and right now, I was kidding with him, he's the winningest coached in, um, classic history. Um, never beaten, I'm just kidding. We believe that'll keep up. So anyway, um, without further ado, Steve, if you want to update, that'd be great.
Well, my, my line to everyone is that I am undefeated as the classic lacrosse coach. But then I hope that they don't get to a place where they ask me what my winning percentage is, because I do not have one. I, I want to thank all of you for, for having me on tonight. And again, just to, to pick up off, off the kids there, um, you know, the, I've talked to a lot of the, obviously, boys lacrosse players, but a lot of the student athletes across the board. And I'm just so blown away by, you know, the class of 2020, their level of maturity. And, and this is all very difficult to digest for all of us. But just the way that they've been able to put their, their thoughts, um, out there and just being understanding and, and just really mature about the whole situation, it's, um, it's mind blowing. Um, but you know, we all want the best for them. And, and so we'll continue to, to see what we can do. Um, you want me to start with, um, kind of the spring and where we're at in that update? Or you wanted first, let's, let's go through the, um, the winter actuals?
Let's go through winter.
Okay, great. Um, so, um, we have the winter, uh, report here.
Do you want me to go to the detail or the lead sheet?
Um, I can go through the, either or. Um, I was gonna start, I can go through the detail, like kind of team, team by team, uh, if you'd like.
Can you all see that on the screen?
Uh, no, I still see the agenda.
Oh, you do? Okay. Keep talking, Steve. I'll find, figure out how to do this.
Okay. Um, a lot of our, our numbers, you know, similar, similar to last year. Um, a, a couple of major changes that, that I wanted to discuss. But in the end, it, it, it kind of brought things out, um, similarly to, to years past. But one in particular, um, where you see a major difference, a $10,000 difference is with, um, boys hockey. So this year, we saved, um, $10,000 on facility rental with, um, the boys hockey team combining with Hull. Um, so in creating that, that co-op, um, Hull absorbs 50% of, of the facility expenses. So that was the, uh, a, a big major savings there. And it's almost girls hockey and boys hockey now mirror each other. Um, and what I mean by that is, in girls hockey, we're, we're a combined team with Hanover. And I would say the team is made up of about 85% Hanover, um, student athletes. Um, and, and up and down, but it, it usually on the lower end of the numbers is, is the Cohasset participants. Um, and now we kind of have the flip side of that on hockey, where, um, 80% of the team is made up of, of Cohasset players. Um, and then Hull has a, a smaller number. Um, so that was, that's kind of the big change in that number there. And now, um, looking forward to next year, um, the budget numbers, uh, are remaining the same. And that's being because we only got approved for a one-year co-op. So I think that's obviously something, um, we have to reapply for. They were kind of hesitant, but I think off base, the way everything worked out this season in terms of the team, the number of participants, and where we're projecting to be in terms of number of participants over the next few years, they'll give us a, um, two or a three-year co-op, at which that point I'd adjust, um, the following athletic budget to reflect the, the cost savings that, that we'll have.
Steve, I have a question on the co-op. So you get a co-op year by year? Because we've been with girls hockey with Hanover for several years.
Yeah, so in, in applying for the co-op, they, um, approve it for one, two, or three years. Um, where this was our first year, uh, applying for the co-op, they decided to give us a one-year approval. Um, with, with the girls co-op, it's like, we've been able to show a lot more data of, this has been our consistent number of participants year to year to year. So they, when we go to renew, they keep giving us a three-year approval.
Okay.
Um, but I do think based off the numbers we had this year, I, I think what they didn't want to see is that Cohasset and Hull combined in boys hockey, and they have 35 kids in the program and the team goes, um, 16 and two.
Right.
Um, but, uh, you know, we, we did have the lower number that we thought we would. And, and the team had a, a successful season, but right around 500, they did not make the playoffs. And it really kind of shows that we, we do need each other, um, in order to keep a, a solid program. Couple of the others in terms of savings that I want to point out. One, one being in swimming. Um, I, I thought it was noteworthy to point out. So there was a, a savings of about $4,000 in a, in a coaching salary. So, um, last year's, uh, assistant coach did not, um, come back with us. And in posting the position, um, we just, we just weren't finding, um, candidates that were willing to do it. But, uh, but our head coach, Bill Burnett, um, stepped up. He took on the role himself. Um, so again, next year, we're, we're gonna be looking to add an assistant coach or specifically a diving coach. But that is, um, you know, a variance of, of, you know, $3,800 you can see there that I wanted to kind of bring up and, and, and just discuss to everyone. Um, and answer any questions if we, if we have any questions.
On, on swim in particular or on winter?
On winter, yeah, sure. I'll, I'll open up if there's, yeah.
I did have a question on gymnastics.
Sure.
Um, the, with nine girls, now this is a co-op team with Norwell, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so with nine participants, it looks like we had two coaches. So is that an offset, like Norwell pays facility or they pay or officials and we pay the coaching?
Yep. So, I, I mean, in looking there, you can see basically everywhere else in the field is, is non-existent. And so, um, previously, what, what was agreed upon and, and the numbers, they're about the same is Cohasset assumes the two coaching salaries of, of the $11,000 there. And then Norwell covers everything in terms of transportation, uniforms, um, the facility. And then if there's any dues to enter into any type of competitions, they, they pay that cost as well. Um, which this year, um, came out to be, um, just about $12,000.
Okay. Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, I, I have a, a general comment. And, you know, we can just, we can discuss this, um, in depth, you know, a- at a different point in time. But I'm noticing a trend, if you go back to even FY18 in the winter. And if we look at the user fees, if we go to the cover page, maybe Patrick, do you have that? So we have user fees for the winter season of $31,250 for 172 participants. And last year was 35,250 for 184. Um, the math doesn't work out assuming everybody pays a full user fee. So either we have, um, the average is at $181. If you just take the 31,250 divided by 172, which I know nobody's paying $181 as their user fee. So some, some families aren't paying and, and some families are paying full. But last year is 191 and the year before it was 226. So there's a steady decline in the average amount per athlete, if you follow the math. And, um, you don't have to answer it now, Steve, but with the booster donation line getting smaller and smaller every year, because they're doing things off, you know, um, not through the department, we count on the user fees a lot. So I don't know if, and again, you don't have to answer this now, but you know, do we have a higher level of scholarship kids, you know, or families? Or, or did more families use, get to the family cap in the fall or in the, you know, or, or did they get to the family cap during the winter so they only had to pay the 150? Do you know what I'm saying? There's, but, but it's concerning because we're counting, it's gonna, user fees are gonna be more important going forward. Um, based on, you know, we're gonna talk about later about, you know, the, the budget and, um, the state of the town budget. So I just don't know if we have a strategy to kind of look at user fees and make sure we're, we're getting, you know, what, what we should be.
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, um, and obviously, like you said, we could talk about it, um, another time, deeper detail. But yeah, like, like some of the things you just mentioned, I mean, um, I think that's clear there. And, and doing the math, you can see that. And I would say, um, we do have a, a good amount of families right now that have multiple, um, students playing sports. And they're hitting that cap early. Um, there's been a little bit of an uptick in people requesting, um, financial assistance through the waiver. But I think that the number one answer here, um, is, um, a, a running list I have of, of families that still owe the user fee. So it's an, it's an outstanding fee. Um, and I do think, you know, the simple fix to that would be getting into a, a, a position where, um, student athletes may have to be considered to be taken off the field of the court if that, that fee's not paid. Um, you know, looking at other ways, but I will say in, in last year, when we had the, a, a similar conversation, um, you know, I'd say by the end of the spring, going into the summer, a lot of these families made good on the payment and turned it in. And a lot of it, it's just like a, an oversight, or I didn't see that. And, uh, you know, my apologies, let me take care of it right away. So I do have confidence in, uh, in the money being there. Um, obviously, in the state that we're in right now, that may be a little bit different of a scenario. But last year, and again, in this fall, going into the winter, people made up and, and, um, after a couple of emails, paid, paid their fees. But I, that, that's the number one culprit, if, if you want to call it that.
Yeah. And, and you know.
Excuse me, can, can I say something?
Sure.
Ellen, um, I, I, this isn't meant to be, uh, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't know how to make this sound not offensive. It's not meant to be. I just, I, I don't know how appropriate all this is to be talking about right now. Like, I think a lot of people are having a lot of problems right now. And, and like, we're talking about like fees and, and this is not meant to be, I, 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 I'm not trying to target anyone here. Uh, Steve, it's always a delight in dealing with you anytime. And, uh, Ellen, I understand why you're asking questions. I just, I feel like this, this might not be that well received right at this moment in time. I think probably people are most concerned right now with like remote learning and, and all the, the work that, that Pat and Leslie have been doing. I, I'm just, I'm just a little worried that we're talking about fees and stuff. I'm just, I'm very uncomfortable with it. I, I just want to, I just, maybe, I don't know, wanted to put that perspective out there.
Um, okay, Craig, I, I, I hear what you say, but we are, you know, receiving a presentation. And, and I am not saying that Steve has to go out and pound the pavement. Um, because what I was about to say is, this is unique times and we will have families in challenging situations. And if school resumes for the fall and sports resume for the fall, because there's talk out there that there might not be sports in the fall, you know, at the high school or the collegiate level. We're gonna have to be sensitive to that. And we're also going to have to maybe talk to the boosters and come back and regroup. And maybe some of the things that they, uh, raise money for, if, because this has happened in the past. If we say, listen, we really need your help on this, this, and this, so we don't have to raise fees or so that we can afford more scholarships, we're gonna have to have those conversations. Because th- this is part of our job. Um, I understand what you're saying, Craig. And, uh, you know, maybe it wasn't appropriate, we had this on the agenda, but we have business we need to continue to conduct.
Okay, this is my single soul opinion, you know, as one person here. So that's, I'm, I'm just voicing it and, and maybe people share it, maybe they don't, I don't know.
All right, Steve, so maybe, maybe what we'll do is we'll regroup on, you know, a finance and facility subcommittee meeting and just kind of, kind of look at it. And, um, so we can have a real accurate picture of, of where we are.
I just wanted to make one comment, Steve. Um, it, it looks like the, the gate fees were, uh, gate receipts were, um, actually 10% up. Does that mean more peo- more folks were going to the games, which would be great? Maybe there is a silver lining in this.
Yeah, I mean, um, I think there, over some of the sports, that, that there was a, a, a little bit of an uptick. I actually, I think, um, this year, you know, our, our winter sports teams did, um, uh, uh, very well. I would say we, our highest achievers were across like sports like wrestling and swimming, where we don't usually charge, um, well, for swimming, we don't charge an entry fee. But, um, you know, had, um, our basketball teams had, I think, one or two more playoff games or our, our hockey team make the tournament, I really think you would have seen, um, that number be, uh, much higher. But, um, I do think, um, considering, um, the attendance overall was, did well this, this winter. Our, our hockey games got moved from, you know, eight o'clock on Saturday nights to four in the afternoon. And I found a lot more families came out and, and brought younger kids. And, um, we're gonna be held into that four o'clock time slot going forward, as it appears. So, um, yeah, it was. And again, I would say in that number two, um, it, it could have been, um, higher and more reflective of the people that attended games. But like, we did a, the girls' basketball ran a great night where we didn't charge anyone, um, admittance into the game because we did a pink, um, cancer night where we donated all donations, um, to cancer research. So, so again, yeah, I think, I think there was, um, a, a good student following. And obviously, um, always great support from, uh, the parents and, and younger children coming out to the games this winter.
Great, great. And, and, uh, Steve, if somebody wants to donate, would they donate to the booster's club? Or could they write a check to the, uh, school? Or how could folks that want to participate or they want to help out a little bit, how would they do it? Could they just like, again, could they just write a check to the town?
Yeah, they could, they could, uh, write a check to the, to the schools, um, you know, or, uh, as easy as we've seen it, if somebody's coming to a game and, and they might just say like, here, I'd like to make, you know, like a, a, a small amount donation of, like, you know, I'm gonna buy two tickets. And then, you know, here, here's $20. And we, and we note that as a donation when, when we turn over, uh, gate receipts. Um, but I would say, yeah, the simple answer would be through the, through the business office.
Great.
Hey, um, Ellen, if there's no more questions about the finances here, do you want to hear a little bit about the coaches and what we're doing right now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Steve, maybe talk a little bit about what you're working on with your coaches right now.
Yeah, so, um, you know, it's ever evolving. Um, and, and we're staying in touch regularly to just keep the kids e- engaged in, in putting stuff out there. As Caroline mentioned, um, our girls' lacrosse team have been doing some workouts online that are voluntary. But a, a lot of the girls are really enjoying it. Um, w- one of the teams is, is doing like a, a GroupMe app where they're putting out certain fitness challenges or trying to have like a virtual 5K. Um, you know, things, uh, to that nature. When we really first started getting going and we had our first, um, kind of suspension of the season, you know, we were really operating under the, the feeling of everyone stay positive. You know, we'll be out there in a couple of weeks. And obviously, as new information comes out and, and where we're at now, um, it's just, it's just being on top of checking in, seeing how everyone's doing. The, the kids are settling into their routines with the remote learning. Um, you know, I know from my end. You know, I know from my end on on the boys' lacrosse front, we've we've lined up a few alumni. And one already being an assistant coach who who are gonna come in on, say, like a Zoom call and 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 talk to some of the kids and. You know, the premise really being you're in your late twenties and and you went through Coas at high school, went through college, you get your first second job, maybe. You know, if you could go back and and give yourself in high school advice, what what advice would you give and kind of just as as these. Kids get ready to go on to either another year of high school or on to college, just kind of some of that that life advice, so. It's um, it's been good, it it kind of mixes things up and. From an athletic director standpoint, we met today as a league virtually, and. One of the big projects we have been working on is getting some speakers in to to talk about diversity and. Maybe some different obstacles we we have faced as as schools and as a league over the last couple of years. So we're really with the extra time, we're we're really fine tuning that and trying to line up some speakers that then we can. Create to a virtual audience here for the students.
Yes, that's great. Any questions for Steve, I know that the coaches have been working hard to think about, you know, what, how they might. Reservate the season if it's available, I know that's so important to so many kids and. You know, it's it's a it's a major, major factor in learning too, so I thank you, Steve, for your guidance with them. Steve has been on our daily leadership calls, and he's a really important part of our our team. And works closely with obviously Principal Scott and Assistant Principal Noyes, but also with all of us, he's a, he's a real. A real help and a and a guide for us as well, so thanks, Steve, for that, any questions for Steve regarding? Who we are?
No, just thanks, Steve, I I didn't mean, hopefully that wasn't taken the wrong way, I have nothing but respect for you, and I I really appreciate your time tonight, and and you know, I I was just, I was just voicing an opinion, that's, I had nothing to do with you, so thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you, I understand.
So Steve, if if school reopens on the fourth, what's what's the athletic schedule?
So the, it's it's a, it's a league schedule only. We got together last week and recreated the South Shore League schedule, so basically, playing through everyone in the league. Right now with the MIAA, if we start on May fourth, you have to play a minimum of eight games to make the tournament with a maximum of twelve. And so we we have ten league games in there in which they're already scheduled out right through May fourth up to the cutoff date. Of the second week of June, so that's, that's what that looks like right now.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
All right, well, thank you, Steve, thank you, thank you for doing this and have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So next, though looking at my agenda here, I believe we have an update about our remote learning. And where we are with it, if you remember, the last time we met, we were in a different phase of our remote learning. And we've since transitioned. To a a more in-depth and a deeper learning model. That I had mentioned we would be going to, we wanted to make sure it was unique and appropriate for each school building. We've received really good feedback, I I just want to stop by saying I I I feel really proud of our educators. For continuing to keep the social emotional needs of families and kids first and foremost in everything we do. And as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Collins and I have been visiting Zoom teams, Zoom team meetings. The teachers are meeting almost on a daily basis to plan together, which is wonderful to see. Even before we move to this new phase of virtual learning, or I should call it remote learning. We, they were doing that, but of course, they're more structured now. And the outcome is not just to produce good lessons for students, but it's to do it in an articulated way. And then one of the things that's been really awesome for me to say firsthand is they're having a lot of conversations about families that might need assistance. If if students aren't responding, for whatever reason, they're rallying around those students, but not in a way that's pressure filled. And I I appreciate that, it's it's more like, you know, we've noticed that you haven't been, is there anything we can do? Trying to get a sense for where they are, because we do want to keep that continuance of learning moving. But we also, you know, need to always keep in mind, this is a health crisis. And that our families are going through a lot, and not every family is going through the same thing. And that those those conditions can change rapidly. So we're really doing our best to keep that line in the middle. But to give the best educational experience we can for our students while keeping that social emotional need really first and foremost. So I'll let Dr. Collins talk about a little bit about the 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 update, where we are with each building. How it's being received and what we're looking at, because, and thank you, Dr. Collins, for your work in articulating it all. This was not an easy task for the educators, but I think they've done a really great job, I'm very proud to be amongst them, and. I also want to thank the students, you know, you saw the three students on the on the committee here who were working really hard, but. Within that, also keeping a really good spirit about it. Thank you for, you know, all the efforts that the students doing and then the families, because I know that all families are going through different things. And just know that we're listening and we promise we're gonna be flexible as we go through this, so.
Thank you for that, I was hoping I could share my screen, you shared yours, so I don't know what that means.
Down at the bottom, it says share screen, I think you can do it.
Yeah, I have, I see blank, so I'm gonna see if I can.
A little green box at the bottom.
Yeah, it's green box at the bottom, it says share.
Yeah, yeah, it has that. But it's.
On that, then you gotta pick the documents that you want to share.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not showing up the same as it normally does, that's why I was wondering with two people sharing. Let me see if I try it again, sorry about that. Nope, that's not it. It's not, the screen's not exactly the same as it would normally be, that's why I'm a little.
At the very bottom, do you see a strip that says mute and stop video security, participants chat, and then it says.
Oh, no, I have, yeah, when I click on the share screen, it says computer, share computer sound, optimize screen shares for video clip. That's all that I have, that's not normally what I would see.
So you you have to, you have to open up the document first.
Okay, let's see, I'll try it again.
Leslie, are you a host?
I, yes. Isn't that weird? I know, I should be able to.
What I try and do is says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah.
Oh, you were the host, but she was.
Be able, right, I should absolutely be able to, that's why I'm a, it's. Yeah, it's a totally different screen. Than normal.
Well, may have to, may have to go about it.
Okay, all right, we'll just talk about it then, but I won't, so first off, I do want to, I want to thank Dr. Sullivan for his leadership through this. As you can imagine. Excuse me, it's been challenging and exciting and hair pulling at times, because. You know, you're not exactly sure what what direction we're going, but he's been such a strong leader in this and very calm. And really keeping us focused on making sure that we're considering the whole child. And really thinking about simple is best, and so that's been very grounding. Because teachers want to know everything that's going to be coming at them, and in these uncertain times, we really don't know, so. We're just doing the best we can with with the guidance we have, and we we've been following the state and in. Ed leadership from ASCD today, and Dr. Sullivan shared with it that Massachusetts is a model for how to roll out remote learning, and we've done exactly what that model is, we kept it simple. We kept it developmentally appropriate, we kept the whole child in mind, and we didn't start any new technical, you know, technical. Initiatives, we just took what we had and set up a guideline that aligned K through twelve and said, okay, now let's move forward, so. I can't thank the staff enough, they have shown amazing grace and collaboration and initiative in this process. The building leaders leading their their staff, a couple of standouts, IT has done a great job with. Helping us with not only the technical pieces around the educational pieces, but also helping to get out devices to families. Because not everybody has enough devices, you know, there's families with three, four children. And two parents working at home, all of a sudden, you know, the two iPads and the two laptops are not enough, so. They've been instrumental in really helping us, so every week I go and we give out somewhere between twelve, seven and twelve Chromebooks a week, so that's been really helpful. And Kathy O'Brien, who's the instructional technology specialist at. Osgood and Deer Hill has really stepped up, she's the person who takes care of the website, she's the person who's organized all the resources on all the pages, she's created all sorts of. Tutorials and other thing and resources for the staff, so she's really done a lot, so I just kind of wanted to give them a shout out, did I forget anybody? I don't know about Pat, but that was, those are kind of the people that were on my mind, so.
Obviously, the principals have done a.
I did, did I forget them, I'm sorry if I forgot.
No, I don't know, just.
Yes. They do, and that, you know, and they're really staying connected with the staff and and the parents, you know, and listening to them, and. So just a quick overview of the plan, so originally, it was enrichment only, that was the recommendation, and then. The recommendation was to move it up to remote learning, and that. Is not. Not a regular day where you're, you know, sitting in front of a computer, you heard the students talk about it, we're not putting kids in front of a computer for eight hours. There were recommendations from the state that they wanted you to think about it being. About half of their day that would be involved in academics, they also wanted you to be cautious. And really be thinking about equity and the fact that everyone has to have the opportunity to access it. If you were to do synchronous learning, such as you took a Zoom and you were teaching a concept in a Zoom class, and then didn't offer any other way. For those students who couldn't be in the Zoom class, then we weren't being fair, and we weren't thinking about all kids, so. We really talked a lot about what's the difference between synchronous learning and asynchronous, and our philosophy was that. If you want to do something in Zoom, that's fantastic, it's so important to connect with kids. But make sure that there's an asynchronous opportunity so all students can participate and access the curriculum in their timeframe. The other guidance was no grading, we're doing credit versus no credits, we had a lot of dialogue around what does that mean? More specifically, at the high school level, you know, what is that going to look like now, and what will it look like in the future, and we're we're already in conversations about what will that look like? When, if we have to stay in this mode, and then we have to actually look at what we're gonna do for grading. But I also feel like that component of credit and no credit kind of gave a little bit of incentive for kids and helped parents out a little bit. When it comes to, yeah, you have to do this, you know, this is important, it's important for you to participate, and now, you know, you're gonna get credit for it, so that, I think, was really helpful. We then created our plan to think about what were the important things that we wanted to make sure that we got across, certainly a vision statement and a definition of remote learning. But then what were our, kind of our framework from which we were gonna work from, so what were the learning expectations? What are the lesson delivery modes that models that we want to see? How are we gonna communicate, and then the resources and supports? So there were some general things that go along with that, but then each building had to think about what was developmentally appropriate for their students. And what was going to be best, something in kindergarten isn't going to be the same as it is gonna be for an eleventh or twelfth grader, so. We looked at learning expectations and we talked about what are the expectations for teachers, you know, what what should they be thinking about as they're moving forward? And that was done in conjunction with the CTA. And so a pretty comprehensive look at how are they going to deliver assignments? How much time was going to be spent, some of those kind of expectations, what kind of would lessons look like, what would family expectations be? Because we didn't want this to feel any more than if they were helping their children with homework, many parents are working from home. They have several children, it's impossible for them to be their teachers too, and that's not the intention of what we're doing for our remote learning. And then the students' expectations, do your best, you know, some of the things that we want you to be thinking about as a learner. It's not, it's, you know, it's not just about your grades, it's about learning and participating with your teachers and your and your students, I mean, and your classmates. The next framework was about lesson delivery models, we wanted them to be authentic, we wanted them to be real world. We know that there are standards that they have to. That they have to be able to teach, but we also wanted them to prioritize because. You know, there's certain things that are more, that we feel are a little more important, and teachers know what they need to do. We wanted them to have real world experiences when we, when they were creating their lessons. And so that was kind of what we talked about, and how would that go out? How would those things happen, so for example, at the Osgood, their plan was to kind of have a menu. And that allowed parents to be able to pick and choose different activities for their kids. They have, they all are doing Zoom meetings for the most part and checking in, but. Being able to have multiple choices and have it just be out there for parents so they can. Pick and choose what works best for them in the time that they're there, and everyone's participating. Regular ed teachers, special education teachers are all putting resources out, music, art, PE. But they're keeping it in a kind of a controlled manner so that parents aren't getting inundated all the time. So all the staff is making sure that at nine o'clock on Monday, if that's their day, then that's when their things are coming out. But the middle, at the elementary schools, they pretty much send everything out on Monday, that way parents can plan for the week. When you're looking at Middle Swan High School, they're doing things daily, but but still kind of staying in that timeframe of nine o'clock and the, you know, that Monday being. The jumping off point. Deer Hill's plan is a little bit more intense there by grade level, and all the grade, the grade level teachers are working together. And creating a plan for the whole third grade, so today, when I was at the digital learning meeting. Margaret Holland, who is a third grade teacher, was talking about how they're, all all third grade teachers are participating together with all the students. Which is wonderful, so they're getting to learn all those students, and they're all, the students are getting to learn all those teachers, even though they saw them before, now it's a little more in depth, so. That's been really, really terrific, and then the middle school, they broke their content down by days, so for example. Monday is ELA and PE Health, Tuesday is Math, Wednesday Social Studies, Civics and Music. Thursday, Science, and then Friday's World Language, and then some other specialists, and that's been a really. Positive collaborative experience, those teams, grade level teams were always collaborative, but now they're really working in tandem. To make sure that they're creating opportunities for kids and really looking at that project based learning. Model that they've been doing and really kind of growing that through through their virtue for the remote learning. And then the high school, theirs is a little bit different where they are, period one is Monday, period two is on Tuesday and et cetera. And as you heard the students talk about, they really like being able to focus on one content during that day. And one of the things that we've talked about is the timeline for assignments. Kids are getting credit if they do it, and there's a certain criteria that we're, that we'd like them to work toward to get credit, but if they haven't done it. There's not going to be something that says a zero next to their name right now, because some kids can't get those assignments done in the in a, in a week's time. Because something's happened with their family, they they themselves aren't feeling well, whatever the case may be, so we're being very thoughtful about. No hard timelines for assignments to be turned in, because we don't know what's happening. Any questions about kind of what the setup looks like for the learning model and the delivery? We kind of talked a lot about, a lot at the same time, all right, and then finally, we have communications, really the importance of communications, and you heard the students talking about how their teachers are connecting with them. They're so aware of the social emotional learning of, for their kids, and what's so important. And that we have to be respectful that we're in a pandemic, and this is, this is a very stressful time for people. So really checking in on kids, especially those that haven't, we haven't seen participate yet, and all the, all the schools. Principals and guidance and adjustment counselors all have a plan, so if they haven't heard from students, or students haven't checked in, they have a plan to. To connect with those families, check in on them, make sure that they have what they need. You know, and and do what we can to support them. And then finally, our fourth framework was resources and supports, and so that was really just all the. And so that was really just all the things that are out there that we have, our resource pages that have activities for families, other things like some of the welfare pieces that we need or some of the support that they may need around our interface, facelets we have for counselors. I mean, this is a stressful time for people. And so, and just making sure that we had everybody's names out there, their email addresses so that everybody knows that they can reach out to any of us at any time for support. And then on our, our website is also each individual plan for each, for each building.
We've also talked about things like crisis planning, mandatory reporting, you know, the need to be continued to mandate. So pieces that would need to be attended to even in a remote environment. Like I said, we meet daily as leadership team. We're moving to maybe three times a week to have bigger meetings now that we're kind of up and running. And, but they're all through the day planning with their, with their teams. There's a lot of hard work behind the scenes. I feel really good about that and thank you.
Thank you, yeah. It's, it's been a pleasure. And I think, again, I can't, I can't say enough about the teachers and, and, and all the things that they're trying. So it's, it's hard to learn how to teach in a totally different model. You know, and, and how do you, and, and how do you work the technology? How do you make sure you can connect with your kids? There's so many things going on and at the same time creating their lesson. So I can only imagine it's going to get better as they get more comfortable.
Well, and I think as you go, as we go, that idea of experimenting with some different activities will increase. You know, people are really trying to get a baseline right now and a foundation. You're seeing sparks of that creativity in the lesson planning. I think you'll see more and more as we go. The kids are going to need that. They're going to need that experience so they're not just sitting right in front of a computer.
Exactly, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I, I have a question, but I'll defer to the committee first. If anyone has any question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I have my little remote learning packet here. And it, it's, it's an incredible testament to the amount of work that's going on behind the scenes. It's extremely comprehensive and easy to read. Do we have this on the website so people can see the whole thing? It kind of reads like a program of studies only for remote learning. It's very helpful.
We do, I don't know, Pat, Dr. Sullivan, do you want to share your screen to show where it is? Since I obviously can't figure it out.
I don't know, I'd have to, I'm not sure I can do that, but I.
Oh yeah, that's right, you can't because you're not, I had it all down here. But yeah, if you go right on our webpage, it's under our schools on the main page. And if you look right on the front, it says announcements. And if there's a COVID-19, which is all of the announcements from Dr. Sullivan and all the updates that we have that come from the town are on that page. And then right below the COVID-19 icon is remote learning. And under the remote learning, you click on that, it takes you right to the pages. Oh, there it is.
Can you see it? Okay, so I'll show you. So yes.
And this is all Kathy O'Brien. That's why I had to give her so many props for this.
These are updates. If you click on this, you can see announcements there, community updates. So all of the community updates that we've done are right here. So if people want to look back at, at that kind of important links, these are really important links that show, you know, a, a lot of things from resources to some of Governor Baker's online resources. There's health and wellness links here. So this is, it really has an amazing amount of information. To go back to the home screen and you click on this, Jennifer, this is where the resources are. So there's your guide right here. So if you click on this guide, there's the document. And what's really important here is that you go to the end of it because it has the general, general things. But if you go to the very end of it, and these are also have their own links on the, on the website.
Right, there's all live links on there.
The individual plans. So if I click on the high school plan, you can see it right here. Okay, and so they all, they all read. And I also put, I thought Principal Scott's newsletter was so well done regarding a lot of the approaches that his team was taking, that I put that on there as well. But there's a, there's a lot there. And, and as Dr. Scollins said, Kathy O'Brien is building it daily, really.
Yeah.
It's right there, everything from the link. And then if you, if you also see over to the left here.
Right.
Where there are the, the actual plans themselves right there. And then you have all these resources for the various levels, high school, middle school, Deer Hill and Osgood. So it's, there's a lot here. And I think it's, if you get into it, you can see that it has a, a logic and how it's laid out. So there you go.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
And then I did, Ellen, if you don't mind, I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
And, and a comment. My, my comment is that I'm, I as a parent am extremely appreciative that I do not feel like I am my child's teacher. And she's able to seem to access this on her own, which, and I certainly, I can't speak for all children in the district, but I appreciate at least that there's sort of a philosophy of that in how you're putting together the programming. I have two questions. So for, are we keeping attendance of some sort? And because if, if the kids aren't logging in at all, while I understand there's, clearly it's a, it's a unique, unique time and there may be serious issues. But I'm just wondering if we're keeping track of that.
So we're not necessarily keeping attendance as a daily record because that would be impossible for us to really do because we're not asking kids to log in. But yes.
We're also not being asked to do that by the state.
Correct.
So you know, there's a, the accountability doesn't, it, it only goes to me. However, keep going, I'm sorry, we were going to say that, I was going to say.
That's okay, you're probably, you're probably going to say the same thing. But each building has a plan and a process in place to find those students that haven't. So they, at the elementary level, if the teacher hasn't heard, they have a whole list of the students. If they haven't heard from a student, they haven't checked in or they've emailed with them, they haven't heard back, whatever the case may be, then those names go right up to the principal and they're checking in personally. At the middle and the high school, they actually have spreadsheets with, with all the kids' names on it. So they're keeping track just to make sure that kids aren't falling through the crack right now because there is a lot happening and they want to make sure that their kids are okay. So that's really kind of how we're, not really keeping attendance, but we're keeping track of kids because that's the most important thing right now.
And Jennifer, can I circle back to something else you said about, you know, the, the parent should not be the teacher? That's a tough one, okay? And I, I say this as a parent because what we're trying to do is create activities that can be accessed at an independent level. I have three kids that are in school. I'm on them, you know, so I am, I am getting them to be, to do the work and I'm negotiating with them and working with them. So I, I, I know that's happening out there and I don't want, and I know Dr. Scollins knows this too. I don't want parents to think that we're unaware of that. We are very, and we're trying to be mindful of it as we move forward. That, that's something that is, is really important. Also mindful of the fact that there are some students who are in situations that either they're very self-motivated or they're in a family situation that allows for this, that they, they want more. And we're trying to allow for that as well. So we're just, when we said that we, that the parent shouldn't be the, the, the teacher, what we really are trying to get at is take a little pressure off yourselves. You know, it's going to be okay. We know you're going through a lot to try to get kids to, to, to learn. And we're not going to assign things that can't be done on an independent level. It becomes trickier at the elementary level when they're, when they need those new skills to be able to do something. But we're super mindful of that. So that's what I wanted, I wanted to just make that clarification because I know there are some parents that are probably saying, and my wife would join me in that, that, oh, really? You know, because I'm working with my kid all the time. We get that, we get it.
Yeah. And that's why the menu idea for Osgood and launching all of the lessons on Monday allows for parents to do it at their own pace. They can even hang on to it for the next week and, you know, add it in. So because we know that the younger students need more support and we wanted to make sure that we made it as flexible and as accessible as possible.
And, and I think parents need to appreciate too that there's a real range. We're seeing it. We're seeing it from response. There's a lot of people that are obviously in the middle and are, are adjusting and figuring it out as the, the kids are resilient and we're building around that. But there is a range. So there are parents that contact us and really expect a different approach in terms of being really rigorous with the material and the amount of time they're spending on it. And then there are parents that are almost in the same minute sending an email that are saying that they're feeling overwhelmed with it and want some guidance and how to deal with that. So we're trying to find that cord in the middle. And I just want people to really understand that, that we're, we're really trying to work with what we have to take care of the kids and to meet them where they are. And I appreciate the sensitivity with that.
Thank you. Ellen, I'm sorry, I just have one more question. And this really isn't related to what our administration is doing. It's, it's more general in nature. Yeah, I'm really concerned about families out there. This is a truly unbelievably stressful time for families across the nation. And I just, I know that they're taking this AP exam, but I just, and, and I, I, I will defer to what the administration and families know that they're going to do. But I'm just sort of scratching my head and wondering, what is the validity of this AP test given the inability to have a secure testing environment? And if we can't have a secure testing environment, why are we adding this to people's plates right now? And that's a question for the college board, I guess, but.
Right, yeah. That's a good question, though.
Yeah.
Are other people asking this question?
Have you heard anything, Dr. Scollins? I, 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 well, I know we talked to the kids about it.
Right.
Whoever might be out there watching, it's a, it's a different format where it's basically a truncated exam. It's like forty-five minutes at home. I, I can't speak to the testing security on that. Principal Scott will be able to and the, his, be able to do it. And, and obviously teachers be able to speak a little more lucidly on that. But yeah, I absolutely hear where you're coming from. I also wonder sometimes if we're hitting the right note, i- if they're, if pushing that is the right move. But, so I'm with you on that, Jen.
It's tough, but it's just, it seems like the test is, can't be valid.
Yeah, that's a good point. I wonder what kind of security pieces they'll put in. I, you know, I'll look into it. I'll, I'll talk to Principal Scott and see what's going on and see what I can find out.
Great question. We will look into that.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer.
The other committee members have questions?
I'd just like to just quickly emphasize how grateful and appreciative. I, I say this, I feel like I say it a lot, but, but I think it's important, especially now. You know, Dr. Scollins, that was such an important update. It was very comprehensive and thorough and deliberate. And I think it was so important for people to hear, not only because obviously people are interested in exactly what's happening in this sort of uncertain world right now and what to expect. And as you noted, you know, no matter what you do, you know, people are going to have varying degrees of, you know, acceptance or abilities to, you know, adopt these, these new learning techniques and procedures and practices. But that said, I think that what you presented really emphasizes just how much thought and effort goes into this and how many different issues there are and how many different facets there are and just how many different variables there are that, that you and the entire leadership team, all of the educators in our district have to consider and factor into the overall solution. And, and none of us have been faced with this before, not only the parents, but also the educators. And, and this is not, this is new for all of us. So it's the first time, so everything you're rolling out is being done for the first time. And, and honestly, it, it, it's nothing more than, than a trial by fire. And I, I think it's important that everyone knows that all of you, all of our teachers and our administrators are working almost round the clock right now and, and, and that they are all absolutely exhausted. And whether or not you are wowed and, and your, your hair's been blown back by, you know, the, the remote learning solutions provided or presented thus far, or whether maybe you're underwhelmed, either way, there is a lot of deliberate and purposeful thought going into this. And it's important that people know that. And I think that your presentation did a great job in, I think, highlighting those efforts appropriately. And I, I just, I just want to say that I, I, again, I, 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 I do this all the time, but I cannot thank all of you enough. And that goes out not only to you, Dr. Scollins, not only to you, Dr. Sullivan, not only to you, Mr. McMillan, but also to all of the principals and all the educators. I, I, I'm just so impressed and, and, and the teachers. You can see it in, in their, in all their communications and, and, and their efforts that are being made, how much they miss the kids and how difficult it is on them as well. And Jen, I, I am so thankful that you are always the voice that, that seemed during this that, that sort of highlights, you know, how concerned we are for all the parents and the kids out there. And, and, and we really are. And, and I think that this presentation that Dr. Scollins just gave, I, I think helps communicate that in a meaningful way. And, and so thank you so much. And, and, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, stand in my soapbox for too long, but I just, I, I just, I want to make sure that I always say that because your efforts have been absolutely remarkable. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's very kind.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Ashley. I, of course, agree with everything that Craig just said. I know, well, I don't actually know how much work is gone into this, but I can only imagine. Because I feel like I'm getting a lot of the products of the work and it's a lot of product. So there must be a lot of work behind it, right? And I mean that in the best possible way. My question is whether there is, so I think, you know, there's, obviously this is very new. We're in sort of uncharted territory. And with anything new, there's obviously an adjustment period and there's sort of a learning curve. And I feel like for me, the feedback that I'm getting from folks is varied. But I, I understand why and I, I don't think that's a bad thing. But my question in, in having that experience is I'm wondering if there's any interest or if there's been any thought put into maybe creating sort of a data gathering tool from families, students, parents in the district about what their experience has been?
So funny you say that because I was just reading the articles today around remote learning, obviously, because the whole country is doing it. And one of the recommendations was, you know, are you checking in with staff, parents and students and kind of surveying where they're at? So I really literally just thought about it today. So, so we haven't talked about it, but I do think that at some point we should kind of do a little dipsticking and see how it's going.
Yeah, the interesting issue is we shifted, you know, so it was like we were moving with an enrichment plan and then we just downshifted a little bit to go, to move into a, a deeper learning plan. So we've been so focused on getting that out that now we're just getting to the point where, you know, we can happen, where, yeah, we need to get some feedback. Yes, so yeah, you're right on.
Yeah, I think today, I felt like today we could breathe, yeah.
Yeah, right. Of course. And I don't mean to, I mean, the last thing I want to do is put more work on it. It was like, trust me, I promise. But I'm just interested, you know, from, because there's such emphasis placed and I have immense gratitude, I think a lot of people do for it, so much emphasis on equity. I would be interested to know if there is a, a significant difference between how families in Boston are experiencing this or how families who have IEPs are experiencing this. And I mean, I would imagine there is going to be. And I mean, I would imagine there is going to be a significant difference. But I think it's just, it's very valuable to just have that information. Understanding, of course, that these times are very unique and that people may not even be able to find the balance of the survey. But I think it's a good exercise for us to go through and hopefully we can get some information about it. Because I, I mean, you know, if, if this ends up lasting longer, it's good, it's good to have that data. And I did look at all the learning plans. I think it was maybe, was it on Sunday night? I don't know, whatever. Either way, I looked at all the learning plans from the different buildings and I, I felt like they all did a really great job of accurately expressing sort of like the personality of the building, the leadership and the sort of grade levels that they were meant to serve. So I'm so grateful.
And so two people, oh, sorry.
I was just going to give a quick note about, you mentioned special educators and special service providers. And they are, they're really working hard to reach out to those families who have students on special education programs, providing as many resources as possible, creating plans for those kids. They're working really hard and we're so appreciative of all their efforts. And they're doing it in a very coordinated and thoughtful way. That shouldn't be lost in this discussion about the plans. Know that's a, that's a big part of it and something that's really important, I know, to this committee and certainly important to the administration.
Right, and Ms. Buchanan has done.
See what the data says about that.
Yeah, I agree. And Ms. Buchanan has done a huge job, yeah, in coordinating that. And then also, Mrs. Gittens-Carlisle, she's been keeping in touch with us. You know, she's at our meetings every day. She's keeping in touch with those families. She's making sure that they have what they need. And if, you know, if they need devices, then, you know, she's coordinating to get someone to come get them or she's coming. So, yeah, so those, those two people too. I don't think I said a big thank you to them in the beginning and I should have because they are doing amazing work also.
And you know, the work is, you got to keep, you got to keep reminding ourselves this is a health crisis and it's going to be interrupted by health issues. We're already experiencing loss from students' relatives, teachers' relatives. You know, this is, this is a tragic set of circumstances. And all of that has to be taken into account when you're talking about anything that has learning attached to it. Because, you know, and I'm a superintendent, my job is to drive learning, but that's not my primary job. My primary job is to make sure that the human beings are taken care of within the organization and that are affected by the organization. And there's a lot of crossover here. So I just want to keep that in mind, that we're being very thoughtful of that as much as we can be, because that's happening.
Dr. Scollins, if at any time, you know, you decide that it would be helpful to do a survey or anything like that, I think Ashley's, excuse me, Mrs. Collier's idea is amazing. But, but in an effort to maybe take an oar, I'm more than happy to try and put together and sort of, you know, I don't know, take, take the lion's weight of the work on doing that and putting that together and getting it out to the community. So it's just one less thing that you guys have to deal with if you decide that that is something that, you know, would be valuable.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, I had a technical question, Leslie, on page seven on the high school. And it talked about students will remain in third quarter classes for the duration of the closure. I assume that through the Fourth of May.
Yeah.
Yes, so we'll have to figure out if something changes, yes.
Yep, that, this, I should say, all of this is set for the Fourth of May. It has a little more flexibility in it because we're clearly, this is very fluid, but that statement is absolutely about the Fourth of May.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. And, you know, I don't want to be redundant to what everybody has said, but I also want to commend Dr. Sullivan on, not only did the plan have to come to fruition, the plan had to have agreement with, with the teachers. And I think the level of collaboration that you and the association exhibited to get this done because it was in the best interest for kids is remarkable. And it didn't go, you know, perfectly seamlessly. I think there were, you know, a few, a few little tweaks here and there. But I think it's a testament to your leadership and the association and the teachers innate concern and caring for their students. Because if they didn't, we wouldn't be in this place right now with remote learning. And I think that is what makes Cohasset unique in many respects because we're small, because the teachers have relationships with their students and they care about them. And I think that getting them to buy into this so quickly, they knew it was in the best interest of the kids. And I can't thank them enough for what they're doing every single day under your leadership and your staff to do what's right for kids, for the whole child.
Yeah, and I want to thank the association as well. It's been positive and collaborative and, you know, very constructive conversations for sure. And it has not stopped us from coming together and creating good plans that I think have allowed us some flexibility and have created a collective spirit. So I feel really good about that.
And as well, you should.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I just have one thing to say. Can someone hear, can you guys hear me? First of all, I concur and echo how well this has rolled out in these undetermined times. Love the idea of a survey. I think that'd be, give us a pulse of what's going on. The Cohasset Mariner actually did a poll. I don't know if anybody had saw this, but it's out there. It's 130 people. 22% said it's going pretty well. I or my child likes working independently on his own pace or her own pace. 53% said it's a mixed bag. I'm probably there at 53% because it's, it's not perfect and I'm not, it doesn't blame anybody. It's just, it is what it is. And then 22% said it's frustrating, the workload is overwhelming. And the only one that concerned me, it's frustrating, my internet connection is unreliable. That's 2%. Just, you know, it's 130 people, I'm sure it's not a scientific poll, but there is one that Cohasset did put out on the Mariner, which I think.
That's interesting.
Those statistics, this is a tough one because you have a lot of different feelings about what this should look like. That is, that's what's really difficult here is that, like I said, we, I just want people to understand that. And it's not about just what it should look like. It's what should it look like for their family, for what they're going through? These are real feelings. They're not theoretical, philosophical. They're, they're really affecting them, infecting their kids. So there's a lot of passion behind it. So that's why we have to decide what do we stand for? And what we stand for is the safety of our kids. We stand for helping our families. And we stand for providing as rigorous and educational experiences we can provide, given the circumstances. So we're really trying to find that mid-range. So actually, those statistics aren't, aren't crazy. They're kind of.
Right.
Kind of where I would think people would be. Yeah, I'm hoping though, that as we get, as we go through with this, that our model is going to be more flexible than a model that we'd have to be retreating. Like the last thing we want to do is overwhelm folks to the point where they're not in a helping situation.
Absolutely.
Do that.
We can always rack it up. We can always add a little bit more, but it's really hard if you go out really strong at first and then have to pull it back. You know, you can grow it and, and, you know, we'll, we'll follow the lead of the children and what the expectations are from the state.
Yeah.
Patrick, I just had a thought. You were talking earlier about, you know, some, some parents, you know, are on it with their kids and they get it. And some parents are pulling their hair out because they, they're struggling. You know, maybe they're working from home or whatever. We worked to get the ESPs incorporated into the agreement. Can they be utilized as a resource, as online tutors? Or if parents are, are, can't get their, their kids access, can they have someone like, like go to an ESP who can say, okay, this is how you navigate through this or just kind of be an extra resource?
Yeah, the ESPs are doing that. They're connecting with the teacher. They're on their Zoom calls. They're side by side with them, helping the kids. So we're looking for meaningful ways to use them that will go beyond that. We're also looking at ways to use counselors. Obviously, school psychologists can't do the work exactly to the fidelity that they do it in a counseling session. There's a lot of reasons why, you know, in terms of confidentiality and just in terms of what they can do. But they're providing resources and support. So yes, that's a piece that we, when I went through and talked to the principals about ESPs, they all had a plan for them. Of course, Mary Buchanan did as well. Everybody had a plan for them. But we're also recognizing that some people can't do their job exactly the way they would. And no one can. But there are some people, like a school psychologist, for instance, who just can't do a therapeutic counseling session remotely. But we can figure out ways for him or her to help that will, will, will support students and families.
Good, thank you. Okay, all right, I think that's great.
Okay, so that's, we could go on forever with that. There's a lot there. It's like, there's a lot. So I think next, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I believe it's the April break, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just to reiterate what I think everybody already knows out there, because I've sent it, that obviously the school committee voted at our last committee meeting that pending agreement with the association, that we would move to have April 21st, 22nd, 23rd and 24th be school days, which would adjust our, at the allowance of the commissioner, that it would adjust our 181st day, and I'll talk about why 181 days. It's because of the holiday that we have to have, that it would adjust our last day of school to be June 18th. And so we've, we've put that into place. April 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th are going to be school days. Our last day of school will be June 18th. So that is, that's what we are securely, we are observing the holiday, Patriots' Day. It's a state holiday. I think this team knew that and I got verification on the commissioner's call that that was indeed a day that we needed to observe as a holiday. So that's happening statewide. The association felt good about that decision. They recognized, as we did, the importance of the continuance of the remote learning. And they thought it was best overall for students. And I really appreciated that. And I think that they also saw, I'll be honest, there's a lot of teachers who are retired right now and in getting, just changing, changing everything that they've done and creating a remote learning atmosphere. But I think they recognize the fact that it's better for kids now to work through this and to move this along than it would be to take a break in a week or so. So that's the update in April break. I don't know if the committee has any, any questions or discussion points on that.
No, I would just comment through MASC, through their listserv, most, I'm not going to say most, most of the districts that respond to the survey are, are conducting remote learning for some, if not all, of April vacation week. Obviously, everyone's taking that Monday off. But most of the districts that have responded are doing the same thing that we're doing, in one way, shape or form.
Yeah, I think it was a very good decision by the committee. Thank you for that. I think it's the best for the kids. Okay, so I'll move on to the next one, which is just some other matters regarding where we are right now. Just a overview of a few things, just to keep the public informed that we are continuing our food service delivery, grab and go, breakfast lunches. We have nine to 10 each day. We do have some customers, but we are ready to, you know, to serve anyone who is a Cohasset student who needs or would just like to have a grab and go lunch that can be purchased through, using your lunch card. And of course, if someone was free reduced, they would receive that because that's what they do anyway. We're, we are also working with the emergency management and our council for elders to serve senior citizens on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. That's, that's going quite well. I know that we're servicing quite a few of them. I know they also have Meals on Wheels on other days. Michael, jump in if you, if you want to add to it. But those, those two things I wanted to mention. Anything you want to add on that, Michael?
No, I mean, I think it's all going well. We've been working well with Elder Affairs and doing everything we can to support that program. It seems to be going well.
And we're, under Michael's help, you know, we're, and Ellen's obviously been in the loop on it. We're trying to provide the town emergency, first responders with everything we can that will help them.
Yeah.
You know, whether it be, I think, some partitions, Michael, we donated.
We've gone through all the science equipment and used all the. Anything they have that we could use. So it's been great to be able to pass that on to the town's emergency services.
And you probably saw a couple of really good feel-good stories from our students. Noah Sullivan, who's a senior, happens to be Alex's son, very nice kid and talented kid, is, has been using the Deer Hill printers to make face shields. And he's actually refined the design so much that the, the fire department was bragging about it. I guess there was another organization that was providing some face shields. And ours was known as the Good Ones, so I like that. But anyway, it's all good. Everybody's good to provide things. But he's been great. And we also have some students, I know a third grader, a girl who's, named Sophia, who's made at least 30 masks for her aunt's hospital. And you're seeing things like this popping up all over the place. And, you know, I mentioned that, you know, there's, there'll be times, I said this last time, there's going to be times for the kids to help. And so that's the highest, you know, form of gratitude for anything that we might help motivate them to is if they help others and they're doing that. So that's great. So the committee should feel good about that. We feel great. Devices, I think Dr. Scollins talked about this. I think we're up about 60 devices and I feel good about the access. You know, there's always thoughts that go through my head, like, are there some families out there that need something, but they're not reaching out to get it? And I'm sure that's the case in some way. I just want to say to everyone that we're very confidential with this, that we'll, we'll keep that of confidence. You know, if you need a device, the only one that really needs to hear that is Dr. Scollins. She'll keep that very confidential. And the same thing for, for food. Food is open to anybody. Anybody can get it. So just don't hesitate, please, if you're hearing this out there, to come by and avail yourself to that. It's yours already. And then I had a call with the commissioner with other superintendents. I did send the notes over to you. I just want to go over a few things that are on there, just so the public knows. There's talk of, well, I guess it is going to be a holiday on September 14th for the marathon. I do not know, this is obviously this coming September 14th. I do not know what that will mean yet for school. There's talk of it being a day off of school. And if that is the case, we will have to consider that in our calendar. But there's nothing definitive about that. But I wanted everyone to know that next September 14th is looking to be some form of a holiday, potentially in Massachusetts around the marathon. For the, for the school closure decisions, which of course is on everybody's mind, I have no definitive word on it. I do however know that and believe that the governor will be making a decision within the next few days to a week. I think that's a safe bet, that he's trying to, trying to make a determination. There was some advice on enrollment during the pandemic. Obviously, students have the right to enroll, even though we don't have schools. So we've already enrolled a couple of kids through this that were kind of at the edge of where we stopped and started. And then the advice on unenrolling students and our student information systems. It hasn't affected us, but I know that there are some families who kind of shuffled to different towns. And their advice being given to us is just make sure that before you enroll, unenroll someone, you're pretty confident that they're not going to come back because it just causes this herky-jerky effect with our student information system. Remote learning feedback, I sent out, there was a pretty robust study done by MIT on. on guidance of remote learning and remote learning approaches, and we fared very well in that. I sent that out to the community today. The commissioner again thanked us and stood by what he believed was appropriate and the way we went about our, our remote learning approach. The budgets, he talked about the budgets being tight. That's an understatement. We all know it's gonna be a tough financial times for everybody, and it's certainly gonna have an effect on local budgets and national budgets. MCAS, as I mentioned, and I had sent out notification, MCAS is canceled for this year, grades three through 10. He talked about why, if you remember, President Trump had canceled MCAS. Basically, he said that it, that all standardized tests were canceled. So there's two levels to this. There's the federal decision, and then it's, so it's a federal and state law that we have a test that has some bearing on graduation that we call MCAS. So it was, the commissioner had to get a waiver from the federal level and then had to go through legislation to get it waived at the local level. That's why there was a delay between when I announced it and when President Trump had announced it. And that's what the commissioner said. He talked about April vaca-, well, he also said that there's gonna be a graduation determinancy. He was very concerned right now with seniors. This isn't affecting Cohasset, by the way. But it is affecting other communities who have students who have not yet passed the graduate competency or the MCAS. And are they gonna have an opportunity to take it again, you know, because they would have had that opportunity if not for the pandemic? So we are, that's being considered. And then what else? Those are the big things. The Student Opportunity Act, he really said, put that on the back burner for now, which, because we can't totally do. But he said that it's at earliest gonna be due May 15th, and he's anticipating delaying it even further. He basically said there are bigger things at hand. And he even was pretty open and said that the Student Opportunity Act money isn't even a certainty right now. It just isn't. That's what we are right now. That was, that was set before a pandemic, and now we have a pandemic. So everything has to be viewed with new glasses as we look at it. And then the educator evaluation, although there was nothing definitive, clearly there's, for the committee to know that the educator evaluation tools are all arranged locally. So they're bargained with their units. So we're gonna obviously have to do some of that and come to some determination around what our educator evaluation is gonna look like. And what I mean by that is how it's gonna finish up, because obviously we've been evaluating through March 13th. So that was it. Those are all big updates, but nothing totally earth-shattering, because it's all been kind of in the works. So those are my updates. Any questions? That's a lot of stuff. Any of that?
No, I don't have any questions. Anyone on the committee?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue to try to be as transparent and communicative to everyone regarding all of this as we go. So thanks for your time.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Okay, so next on the agenda, and this will be corrected for the next meeting, is approval of the warrant pursuant to our vote at the last meeting to have the warrant officer or the chair sign off on the warrant. I did so yesterday or today, I don't remember, and sent it on to Michael so that it could be processed by the town, since they moved the day up. But I did send it out to everybody yesterday or last night. So if you have any questions on it now, or after you get a chance to take a look at it, please, you can reach out to myself or to Michael with your questions. Is that okay?
Thank you for doing that, Ellen.
Okay, sure. All right, so next. Yep, next we're onto finance. So it's you, Michael.
Thank you. Do you want to put the financial reports up, Patrick? Do you have them? I mean, if you have them, there's not, I'll clearly give you the summary.
For you, Michael, I will do it. Let me just figure it out here.
So we're at, by the moment we spent, let's see. Nothing there, yeah. So we've spent 64.46% of our budget so far this year, which is slightly more than last year, but right in step with where we'd expect to be. Perfect, thanks, Patrick. There you go. So they, and you know, compared to where we were last year, there's not, no single area has overspent yet, which is good. A few areas which are close to 100% are specialty tuition, specialty transportation, and contracted services. And those are all areas where we've encumbered funds, really anything we know about, we've already encumbered the funds. So this should be good through the year. And I, really, we're still, at the moment, we're still kind of paying for February and March. So a lot of the bills are seen reflect the impact of the coronavirus closures. So I still am expecting, I was expecting to see a, our expenditure to dip below last year's as we get into April, May, and, you know, as we're paying March, April's bills, because we're just not spending as much money with schools closed so far. Hey, that's really all there is to say on the, the regular budget. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of questions. On the cleaning contract supply line, that's up 12 points over last year. You know, it's not huge money in the scheme of the budget.
Yeah, you know, a, off the top of my head, you know, so I think that includes a lot of custodial expenditure.
Okay.
That kind of just comes in, that just kind of comes in, you know, they just kind of tend to stock up when they need it. So sometimes it's higher at the beginning of the year, sometimes it's late in the year.
Okay. Another question I had, Michael, was on, on the detail report, is the unemployment. I mean, we're almost at 100% of the budget on that.
So a unemployment, actually, so you, so what I've seen in the past is unemployment is highest at the start of the year, because if you've had any layoffs or people leaving, normally it's earlier on in the year. And they get a certain number of weeks. And so once those weeks are up, by this point, you don't often, like, because we're not, unlikely we're going to make anybody, well, we don't expect to make any more people unemployed at this point in the year.
Right.
So you don't get very many new claims. So historically, it does get to, you know, reach almost 100% earlier in the year, and you spend very little after that.
Okay.
That's what happened last year. And so I'm pretty sure it hasn't increased much from February to March. So hey, I wouldn't expect, it's not gonna keep going at the same rate. It's gonna let off.
Flattening the curve.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then the other question I had, not, not a question, just an observation. On, you know, the fault, the pages after this, you know, we don't tend to look at a lot. But I was looking at the expense line in all three, all four buildings. And other than Osgood, which is right on last year, the other buildings for expenses and supplies are up any, anywhere from, you know, 11, from three to 11 points over last year. And I didn't, I didn't have time to look at, see if it was the utility line that was driving it up, or was it really like textbooks and supplies and instructional materials and things like that? You don't have to answer now, but maybe we could.
I'll need to check, Ellen. I have a couple of suspicions, but I'll need to check.
All right, so, okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Anyone else?
All right, so, and then the next report. A, the next report was the, the revolving funds and grants. So they're getting not much, huge changes since last month. We still, we have a couple of negatives, but that's just where we've, this has transportation up on the screen now. But the revolving fund and grant was, we have a couple behind, but that's just where we've not received funding from the state yet. I did get in touch with the state about the safer schools grant, and money is on its way, which is good, because we've had that deficit there for a while. But apart from that, I, the rest is just a delay in funding from the, you know, reimbursement for the state from expenditures we've already had. And then the other revolving funds all look in good shape. Can you go down a page, Patrick? It's the next, it's the last page. There we go, that's on. So yeah, so all the other revolving funds look like they're in good shape going at the moment, just kind of where we'd expect them to be. Any questions on those? And then, so then the next report, Patrick, because when you had a second ago, which is the transportation. Sorry, Patrick, I want me to do this again. It's a transportation budget. So this is, I've developed a slightly different version of this report than I've used in the past, just to make it a little more seamless with the data that Missy puts together. But it's, it's, for the most part, exactly the same as previous reports. And so there was a slight increase from what, from a, the previous month, because we had a couple of repairs that were not covered by the warranty. And, and so we should, we should see maintenance fuel, well, fuel costs will definitely be down, and maintenance costs should also be down going into a next month's report. I should just say that that dark blue box underneath the table, which says off which labor and parks, that's, they're wrong. They're twice as much as they should be, because I accidentally included the total when I was adding them together. But you can actually see where the total should be, where it's under grand total for labor and parks, which are $9,442 and $749. But really, there's not a whole lot to see about transportation in right at the moment, because there's not a lot happening.
Speaking of transportation, what's the status of our new minivan?
So the last time I checked, delivery was still planned for June, but I don't know if that's gonna be impacted. That was, that was, I checked a couple of weeks into the coronavirus pandemic, but I've checked since then, but they're aiming for June. And then, so that's the finance reports. So the next one was the gift, which was a $18,000 from the PSO.
I don't think I have the gift here, Michael.
That's okay. So it's $18,000, and that is going to pay for hydration stations, the high school, middle school, and Osgood's, including installation and filters. And it's also to pay for part of a new audio visual media components for the Deer Hill cafeteria, which the principal has requested. So it's exciting projects, so we'll be pleased to get those underway soon.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's amazing. What the PSO and the CEF do for Cohasset Public Schools. So can I have a motion to approve the very generous gift of $18,000 from the Cohasset PSO?
Go move.
Don't move.
Craig, you want a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, all in favor? I, Elmar.
I, Ashley Cleary.
I, Jen Madden.
Craig?
Hi, Craig McMillan.
Thank you. Paul, are you there?
Paul, your mic is on. You're off.
Paul?
Paul, blink once for yes, twice for no.
All right, well, we have a vote four to zero.
You know, you, you guys can utilize your reactions and do something like that.
Thank you.
That was a really, really generous gift. That was so amazing.
That's, that's amazing. And so that takes, did, Michael, did we have planned three hydration stations from the PSO, or was it two? In our capital budget now? I thought we planned two.
I think it was two, because it was one at the high school and one at the middle school.
Yeah, so we've got three. That's amazing.
Well, that, it's ironic that Paul's speaker wasn't working, because he loved that. He loved the hydration stations.
I know.
And just whoever knows, I did not mute him. I did not. Kid and Paul, kid and Paul.
All right, so next is the, just a conversation on the FY21 budget. On, let me flip back through my notes, I apologize. On the ninth of April, Patrick, Michael, myself, Chris Senior, Kevin McCarthy, and Don Pyatt met. This was our usual monthly update with the town. And Michael and Don came to talk about FY20 and then FY21, based on what's going on, you know, right now in the state and in the country. And we heard some, you know, Dr. Sullivan comment on guidance from the state. I think we recall back to when Senator O'Connor and Representative Mesquita were with us. I think they were, the state was forecasting at the time a six or $700 million surplus at the end of the year. I think that'll probably have gone away by the time this current event is over. Chris and Don talked about, you know, collections from the town, excise tax revenue is okay right now. They tend, they went back and they looked at 2007, 2008, when we had the recession, and kind of looked at how trends were in the subsequent years after that in terms of forecasting excise tax. They say property tax collections are basically on schedule. Usually, they get to 99% of total collections by the end of June, at the end of the fiscal year. They don't know if they're gonna hit 99, but they don't anticipate it to be much shorter than that. And they pushed back the May 1st deadline for, I don't know if that's fourth quarter taxes, back to June. There are decreases in the town for meals tax, hotel tax. Revenue is down, is going to be down, building permits are going to be down, ambulance fees are going to be down. And the state aid is, is very uncertain for, so that's just talking about for, for this year. So you have, we have to have those kind of conversations, unfortunately, and how it's gonna impact this year and on, on to next year. So for FY21, they're looking at decreasing local receipts by about 10% and decreasing, a decrease in the state aid by about 5% for the town, just to take the FY21 budget. Now, it hasn't, our budget, nor has the town budget been voted on or certified. It has to be done by June 30th, which will be done at town meeting on June the 22nd. But they're, instead of, you know, waiting till then, they're starting to look at numbers now. And they anticipate, this is gonna be a two or three-year problem. You know, shortfalls in tax revenue and shortfalls in state and federal aid. So we kind of have to look at it, not only where are we gonna end up this year, what's next year, but what are gonna be the next two to three years after that, and how, how we manage the district and the town going forward. They have already looked at softening the cuts or the change. I'm not gonna say the cuts, because the budget hasn't been certified, but softening the, the projected change that'll be needed in FY21. And they're not done looking at creative ways to bridge that gap. So that's, anything else, Michael?
I mean, I think at the moment, there's still a lot of uncertainty exactly how it's gonna play out. I think I really appreciated having that conversation with Chris and Don. I think they were very candid about where they think we are and what the implications might be and the difference. where they think we are and what the implications might be and the different options the town has to, as you say, soften the blow. Eh I think also, you know, from our perspective, and so we are starting to think about what it might mean for our budget, looking at what we had. We had actually you had actually approved as our budget for next year and what might need to change. Then on we also don't know if other funding is going to be impacted. So things like Circuit Breaker or eh this big special ed grants or Title One grants, whether they're going to be affected by the reduction in the state's revenue and the federal government's revenue. So you know, there's a lot of uncertainty, but there definitely seems to be you know, a lot of funding at risk at the moment, which we start preparing for, I think.
Michael, one thing that the commissioner did mention is that there's a lot of talk of a federal bill that would at our level provide remediation funding. There'll be distributed probably in a manner like Title One would be.
Right.
I would imagine would mean we wouldn't get too much from it. But I don't think it's something we can count on, but it's something that sounds like is in the works, just to, you know, finish that loop.
I mean, you got to worry where the money's coming from because if they're like if all if federal government's revenue is going down so much because of employment and tax, tax has not been paid and, you know, the impact on the economy. And then they're spending all this money to try and get the economy going again, but in the long run, there's got to be a shortage somewhere. Mass just doesn't add up.
I agree. It just was something he said he didn't people didn't challenge too much, but that was.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, we'll take it, right? I mean, if the money's coming right now.
Well, I think, you you know, Michael, I concur with you. I thought it was a very good meeting and I I do appreciate how candidly, you know, Don and Chris work with us.
Yeah.
And how creative they are right now at this moment. And trying to and anticipate something that we have no way to figure out what it's going to be. Like, we're not going to know until we know is kind of is kind of where we're at. We're not going to know what the state aid is going to be until we get it. I mean, so so the fact that they're looking, um they're kind of looking under every rock and looking in every nook and cranny to find ways to keep all of the department's operating budgets intact. And not have layoffs because that's, you know, that's what happens. And we see it in in corporate America right now, unfortunately. And so trying to keep level services, trying to keep um town and school staff where where they are. I I think I really appreciated their efforts to to find some creative ways to soften the blow.
Yeah, I I concur. It was um I thought it was a good meeting and it was uh it was really appreciated how straightforward they were and it was clear that, as you said, they were there. Everyone's being impacted by this and they're trying to do what's right and what they can do and looking at it as a potential multiple year situation too.
Right. So I I anticipate that, I mean, we're going to have to have a budget for June the twenty second. I don't know if it's going to be the budget we have today. God willing, it is, but if it isn't, we'll have we'll have work to do to to get it um to get it where, you know, where it has to be. Does anyone have any questions?
So based on what you said, do you kind of see maybe, and I don't want to I could be way off on this, but like as much as a fifteen percent decrease?
No, we weren't looking at no. So no nothing like that much.
No, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I I just it maybe I heard it was.
Oh, yeah. So you took so there's a ten percent reduction in local receipts.
Right.
Percent reduction in state aids.
Yeah.
Portions so that so actual reduction is less than ten percent because you kind of got to make this the combination of the ten percent of of local receipts going down and five percent of state receipts, which are a smaller part of our budget. So the overall impact is slightly less than ten percent, I think. But then, but I mean, this is just it's just pure. At the moment, it's just speculation. It's not definite at all. I don't think those are numbers that they'd want to stand by at this point. But eh and I and I think they're looking at ways to avoid that. The whole impact of those reductions being, you know, carried out against the operating budgets. I don't we don't expect to make that my percentage of cut.
No.
To the moment, and that could change over the next few weeks to months.
But it could impact it could impact the budget that we put put forward.
On March the fourth, yeah.
Yeah, but just not to that extent.
Right.
It's not good news, but it, you know, it's 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 just a pragmatic feature to this scenario we're in, which is a tough pill to swallow, but you know, we all have to swallow it.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Then next on the agenda, school committee comments and communication. Does anyone have anything? Paul, want me to start with you? Okay, Ashley?
Sorry.
Do you have anything, Paul?
Yes, um can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um yeah, I'm sorry. I got knocked off. Uh I did want to vote for and want to thank the PSO for that generous gift. That was fantastic. And I'm just excited to see the water stations dehydration state dehydration hydration stations get up and running. I guess I have a question for Michael. Michael, we do you see us definitely separating getting everything done for the middle school, high school separation entrance by next year? Are we are we on that?
Well, we have had so we had put a moratorium on vendors coming into the buildings in order to the risk of spreading coronavirus and all that. And that's a sort of decision which is kind of in flux at the moment and we're looking for ways. Because at the same time, we do have a closed building and no students there. So it's also an opportunity for us to get work done.
Right.
We want to minimize any risk.
Right, because a plumber is a essential worker, correct?
Yeah, and some construction projects are allowed if eh depends the status of them, but eh so that's been kind of a conversation we've been having. And we have so we went ahead and told the vendor to make sure he's ordered the parts and everything. So this is the middle school project. So that he'll be ready to go as soon as we are able to give him the go aheads. And we've been working with the town and the eh the town emergency planning to coordinate that and make sure everybody's comfortable with us moving ahead when we're ready to.
Okay, and we also, sorry.
I was just gonna say they've ordered the parts. I mean, if we end up being closed for longer than May fourth, and in some ways this becomes, I mean, if I mean, I don't know what's going to happen, but for closer longer, in some ways it becomes easier for us to get work done, but
Right.
That's all up in the air at the moment.
Yeah, and I know you guys are working hard and I appreciate that. We also have a budget finance and committee facilities committee subcommittee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we can go over some of that as well. And and to Michael's point, we've uh because it's all outdoor work and and all of this has been approved by the town, but we did allow the playground to to start some some work at Ausgood in terms of the demolition phase, correct, Michael?
Yes, so demolition of those good playground has taken place. It's gone and we're hoping to get installation done next week.
And again, that has nothing to do with the building itself. So we're, you know, working with the town and within the guidance we have to to do.
And the vendor is following the guidance from the state about, you know, minimizing you know, interaction between its employees and so on to reduce the risk of spreading eh coronavirus.
We're being super cautious about other jobs happening.
So there's a board of health meeting tomorrow night and Patrick, Pam from the board of health, she she was on our call on Monday. And they're meeting tomorrow night to actually talk about construction because construction projects are allowed to be going forward and they're looking to put in some ordinances about making sure that the 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 GC is making sure that, you know, everyone is safe on the job and all of that. So it'd be interesting to see what comes out of that because uh unless there's a moratorium on public buildings, any work being done in public buildings, there's certainly construction projects going on in town.
Yeah, absolutely. And like Michael said, we're consulting with the town to make sure that we're in lockstep with them.
Yeah.
We're the whole ton of classes is handling it the same way. There's some this isn't the hydration. I mean, I'm sorry, this isn't the necessarily the entrance conversation, but there are some jobs that we had scheduled that required them to be all through the buildings. And right now, we're not allowing those until we get a little further guidance. But the outside projects, we're leaning on the town to guide us and we're obviously making sure that, as Michael said, they they follow the state regulations and we don't have a lot of them. We really have two of them, Michael. It's the it's the bill, the entrance, which is a little kind of in between. And then, of course, the playground, which is absolutely outside the building.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Paul?
Yeah, well, like again, we have tomorrow night, tomorrow's finance facilities committee, so we can talk about it more at the end, more in length then, I guess.
Okay, Jen?
I have nothing to report.
Ashley?
Yeah, so Jen, weren't we going to talk about a policy that we were going to update based on last meeting? Yeah, we're going to have to. I did not prepare it for tonight. I'm I I apologize. It's no problem. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss it if it was ready. Okay. Um we had a very informal virtual diversity committee meeting today where it was sort of a check in, but two things. One is we were going to be participating in the twenty fourth annual Mother's Day Walk for Peace and that benefits the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute, which helps individuals, families and communities affected by homicide. And they can't have their walk this year. So they are taking the fundraising virtual. So there is a website. It's Mother's Day Walk, the number for peace.org and you can support them there. Um the other thing we talked about is that this is clearly shining a very bright light on a lot of disparities that exist. And we feel like after this is over, there will be well, not over, I mean, whatever. There will be a lot of opportunity to sort of discuss that. And we hope that our city and anyone interested in joining us will be able to be will will keep some some focus on those issues. Thanks.
Great. Craig? Craig, are you there?
Sorry, I am. I just hit the wrong button on my phone. I am. I I do not have a report, although I did I did have a question, though, that may be appropriate at this time. What about the uh the exploratory new schools subcommittee formation situation? Is that does that have to be stalled because of this or can we continue with that endeavor virtually?
I sent the request to get it on an agenda for the Board of Selectmen. The request was acknowledged by Kevin and Chris Senior. And they indicated that they very much want to get it on their docket, but right now with everything going on, they asked if we would patiently wait a few weeks. As you know, the the town is still very ramped up in COVID nineteen and and all that's going on, so I.
Yeah, I think that's that's reasonable. I just I was just curious.
Yeah, no, no, I'm I'm glad you asked the question. It was on on my notes to to update.
Okay.
I I won't let them forget, but I am going to give them a little latitude in terms of, you know, let's get through the next thirty days or so.
Sure.
And and then then I'll bring it back up again. And we Patrick and I meet with Kevin and Chris anyway, uh once a month and um so I'll I'll put in gentle reminders as well. Um so the as you guys know, um Patrick and I are on a call every Monday afternoon at one o'clock with town management and leadership. Last week I sent you out notes from from the meeting and I didn't I opted not to this week because we were we were meeting and I I find you know, sometimes they say in crisis, people come together really well and I my personal opinion is I'm very proud of how everyone is truly working together in this town from police and fire and public health and emergency management. Of course, we've never ever seen anything like this before, but everyone is very collaborative, very supportive. Dr. Sullivan provided three, I don't know, three what's the word I want, Patrick? There there are boxes to clean the N forty five masks that we had in our shop in our science rooms and he donated them to not donated, he lent them to police and fire so that these precious masks, which are in such short supply, can be properly cleaned and um safe for reuse. And it's it's a level of cooperation that and and camaraderie, I would say, that I haven't seen in this town in in a very long time. And I hope I hope after this, everyone talks about how kind everyone is. I hope I hope we continue this way of life where we're all kinder and thought more thoughtful and more collaborative. Because it it makes, you know, it it makes it very what's the word I want? Easier to get through. And and that's that's just my my personal my personal feeling on it, so.
No, I would agree with you a hundred percent, Ellen. I think it's um been very collaborative. You people should feel really good about the collaboration between all the town safety officials and the schools. I felt very supported by both chiefs, by Chris Senior, by the Board of Health, Mary Goodwin and Glenn Pratt. All the folks in town have been wonderful and I we've just been trying to do our part in providing them any resource that will help. You know, but they're they're a great, great team. And people should feel really good about the collaboration in town. I'd say we're ahead of ahead of most towns because of the collaboration from the get go. So people should feel good about that. I do.
Yeah, it was the UVA cabinets. That that's what I couldn't.
Yeah, there we go. I was thinking either those they were.
I couldn't come up with them. So um you know, ha- half the conversation on Monday was actually about the storm coming through on on Monday evening and anyone who lives in North Cohasset, um you know, who lost power early and took over twenty four hours. You know, I feel badly for them. Um so Pam Gray is our health agent. So she has direct contact with the Department of Health at the state level and it's comforting to know our town is you know, as many as many Zoom meetings as as Dr. Sullivan does. Our town leaders are doing the same with their counterparts at the at the state and federal level. So that that was that. That's all I had to report on.
Ellen, if at any time you feel like, you know, I mean, obviously, we're we're five member committees. So at any time, if you feel like you need some support in you know, attending the meetings, if you feel like, you know, you you'd want one of us to stand in for you, so you don't have to do this. you know, attending the meetings, if you feel like, you know, you, you'd want one of us to stand in for you, so you don't have to do this every Monday or every Wednesday or whatever these things happen, I'm sure all of us would be willing to help you out during this. You don't have to be the only one doing that. Just, I mean, I'm sure you feel it's your responsibility as chair, but I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Craig. Yeah, it is, it's the Chair of Board of Selectmen is on the call, as am I. So it's kind of the position and not the person at this point in time, but I will, if I find myself in conflict or in a, in a, in a state where I can't participate, I'll definitely reach out. And I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so that's that. So we have one set of minutes to approve. And they are the minutes of February 20, 26. I don't know what I did with my set. Here they are. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I just have one. On page three, it said that I, under reports from subcommittees, the school committee, there's a life skills meeting with the diversity committee, and that was, I think that was Safe Harbor. It definitely wasn't the diversity committee, but I think it was Safe Harbor.
You said, oh, life skills meeting with Safe Harbor, not diversity?
I think so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I would move to approve if you're accepting motion.
Okay. I just wanted to make, give everyone a chance to make corrections. All right, so we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 26th, as amended by Mr. McClellan. Do I have a second?
Again, Ashley Cleary.
Craig McClellan, Ashley, okay. And because we're virtual, we need a roll call vote. All in favor? I, Ellen Marr.
I, Paul Kearney.
I, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Craig. Hi, Craig McClellan.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Thank you. Minutes, no follow-up and updates, no topics, no executive session.
Can we just talk for one second about whether or not we can entertain applications from organizations that might wanna use facilities to get food to people? I don't, I don't have any follow-up from the South Shore Food Pantry, but I know that, and I sent an email to the Cohasset Farmers Market today, but I didn't hear back from them. But I was wondering, I, I'm not sure how this works from a policy standpoint. I know that we stopped allowing organizations and outside people into the building. But I was wondering if, I, I was just wondering what that conversation would look like if, if we could have it.
Well, I, I think, I think we can always have it. I, I think we need to see, you know, what it looks like a little bit more fleshed out and maybe reach out to the town. Maybe there are already facilities that are open that could be used. I don't know about the, our own Cohasset Food Pantry. They might be more geared up towards, you know, assembling food packages and distributing them.
I actually looked that up. They are asking people, as far as I know, to come in their cars with a list prepared of things they need. And then they're staying in their cars and they're going in compiling packages and bringing them out to people.
Okay. How urgent was the request that you received, Ashley?
Well, she wanted, she, this, this business owner, local business owner, is having a hard time getting to Cohasset people who want food from farmers markets. That's what she does. And she is looking to rent a space. So it's not a sort of a, like a community service. I mean, it is a community service, but it's pay, it's a business and she wants to rent space. Because she gets a bunch of product from farmers markets and then her workers compile the packages that are going out to residents. And they then go and deliver it. And so she's looking for, she, she contacted me to see if she could use my barn, but it's in use, so.
So the packages, so, so, so you said it's a business, so the packages are, are sold to people?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I don't, I don't know. I would, shame on me. I don't know the policy. If we, if we have a policy about for-profit entities using our facilities, I'll have to.
Anybody can apply to use our buildings. And there's a different, there's a different price if they are for-profit versus non-for-profit.
Facility.
On the sale of food, though, normally we don't allow, you know, normally when people are renting our property for events, the sale of food is part of it, is not main purpose.
Yeah.
So
I think we'd.
In principle, I don't see an issue with it if this was regular, normal times.
Yeah.
But it just might be more difficult right now.
What, what about there, you know, there's the empty Tedeschi storefront downtown.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to throw it out there, because I also had someone approach me about the South Shore Food Pantry, but then I
So I.
Looked further.
But I think. Actually, and I've also received a request a bit from the Cohasset Food Pantry. So that's something else we're in the process, I mean, just this afternoon. So I've not even really talked it through with Patrick or anybody else yet.
To use our facilities?
Yeah.
So there'd be a couple of things. I mean, I think, you know, because we've, it's hard, this, all this is hard, but because we've restricted access to the buildings for really non, everything but an emergency use. I, I would think potentially something like the food pantry could be considered that. I'm not sure if what you described, Ashley, would. I think that's where I guess philosophically I'd sort of lean, particularly if the town was reaching out to us, you know, and the Cohasset is an organization that feeds the town for no cost, you know, that would be a, I would think a more acceptable lessening of our restriction, but I would, I would definitely wanna hear how the committee feels about all of it. Because I can, all of this is, is new and kinda can be looked at in a lot of different angles.
Well, we also have to look at the fact that today's the 15th of April. There's a chance, however remote, we could be opening up on the 4th of May, just weeks from now. And then what would happen to any arrangement we made with people if the buildings were now being populated with students and staff?
Yeah, I think, I think some of this might be, if indeed the, you know, back to our thoughts about construction projects happening within the building, too. If, if there is guidance given, and I, and I would think that if there, that there's gonna be some guidance in, whatever it might be, in short order. If that guidance is given that the buildings are gonna be closed for, you know, a, a longer period or the rest of the school year, or whatever it is, that could change some of this discussion potentially, potentially. So I just, I, I think that as to Ellen's point, bringing in any large group into a building when we're gonna open in a few weeks is somewhat compromising what we've tried to set for a May 4th opening. And I wouldn't wanna upset all the good work we've done in trying to keep that going, even though it's a good reason with a May 4th opening. So I, I guess if, if I'm trying to, trying to, I'm stuttering over this, but I think if it was a longer period, maybe it would change our thoughts.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, I mean, from my personal, like, if I were to take my own personal relationships out of it, I would agree 100%. I do agree 100% because I can take my personal relationships out of it, right? I think Cohasset Food Pantry is a completely different scenario than a business. And I would advocate for if and when the schools are decided to be closed for the remainder of the year, that we open the doors to the Cohasset Food Pantry if they need it.
But in the, in the meantime, I mean, those organizations can check at Town Hall.
Yeah.
And see if there's other space in town that's, you know, vacant now, maybe, you know, for a longer term basis. Or, or some, you know, vacant real estate.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, just to come back to the Cohasset Food Pantry, so I'll get a bit more detail on exactly what is they need and the space and so on. I'll let you, let you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Where are they normally located?
Well, I think they're trying to do things that they don't normally do, so they're trying to bring in food donations and arrange it. So, which they don't normally have to.
All right. Anyone else? No? So may I have a motion to adjourn at 9:45 PM?
So moved.
Craig moved it second.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Ashley Cleary.
Hi, Ellen Marr.
Hi, Jen Madden.
Hi, Craig McClellan.
Excellent. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I miss you guys. Be well.
Be well.